I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being livestreamed by Chelmsford Telemedia and posted at the Chelmsford Public Schools website for interested community members to access and watch. In-person public participation taking place tonight in accordance with the Chelmsford Public School Participation Guidelines. Anyone speaking tonight during the public input portion of the meeting has notified the superintendent's office of their desire to speak and has been provided with these guidelines. Upon request, written comments received no later than 12:00 PM on the day of this meeting will also be read and made a part of the record of the meeting during the second public comment section. Are there any members of the press here tonight planning on recording? All right, welcome to this meeting of the Chelmsford School Committee. Our first order of business is to approve our minutes from May 5th, 2022. Does anybody have any corrections, additions? Okay, I'll accept the motion to approve.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes for our meeting on May 3rd.
Is there a second? Thank you. All right, any other questions, concerns? All those in favor?
Hi.
All right, next up we'll hear from our Chelmsford student representatives.
Hello, everyone. So this week is the seniors' last week of school, which is really exciting. And seniors are participating in a spirit week to celebrate. And also today and tomorrow is MCAS for the sophomores. Also today was Junior Job Shadow Day. So juniors had the chance to choose a work opportunity that they're interested in and shadow a professional for a day. And this is a great opportunity for students so they can maybe have a potential senior internship next year. So that was great. And also Senior Week is coming up, and it's the week of May 30th. So this includes prom, the barbecue, and the banquet. And we're very excited for this. And finally, the Pops concert happened last Tuesday featuring the band, chorus, and orchestra. Additionally, this past weekend was the Acapocalypse, which featured both of our schools' a cappella groups. So great job to all of those ensembles involved.
Congrats to the cast and crew for Pippin. Tammy nominations have come in, and many members of the production were nominated. I want to shout out a few of the actors and the crew who got nominated. So some of the actors were Daria Sobian, Saachi Bedola, Connor Corbach, Lila Ogamal, Keegan McCarthy, Kira Kumtoys, and Avery Mar. CHS also got nominated for Best Overall Production, Best Chorus, Best Dance Ensemble, Best Student Orchestra, Best Production Number, Best Stage Crew, Technical Excellence in Lighting and Sound, Best Costumes, Hair, Makeup, and Visual Excellence. So overall, CHS was nominated for 17 out of the 19 categories that they are eligible for, which is, I don't know if any other high school achieved that, I didn't count, but certainly a lot. So congratulations to everyone who was involved. That's amazing. On Thursday, upperclassmen will be attending the Car Crash, which is being hosted, I believe, for the first time since pre-COVID. And finally, this weekend is the 24-Hour Relay, which, hosted by Lime, this event will feature teams walking around the track to raise money for charity. It's going to be super fun. I'll be there with the team. And there'll be lots of food and games and everything. And finally, Katrina and I would just like to say thank you. This is our last meeting with you all, as you know, since we're graduating. But it's been a really great year. We've really appreciated the opportunity to be here and give updates and also learn from the committee. So thank you all very much.
Thanks, guys.
I do have a question for you. Are you both participating in the 24-Hour Relay?
I am.
I'm not, but I'm gonna visit.
Okay, good. Do you have a team?
I do.
Are you trying to raise funds?
Yeah, we are.
Have you talked to Dr. Lang or Dr. Hirsch?
I've not.
As well as school committee members, I think you should definitely reach out and see if we can help support in any way.
I will. Thank you.
Is there any other good news?
So most of our good news is here in the audience, and obviously the student reps have the best news. So we don't have any additional to add unless anybody else would like to chime in.
Anybody? All right. So moving on to our first public input session, do we have speakers registered for tonight?
We did not.
So we don't have any speakers, so we'll move on to new business.
Sure, do you want to?
I'll let you go ahead to start us off.
Okay, so again, we're actually very happy you guys are here to join us as well. It's been a good couple of years now. This is your second year.
Third.
Third. You came in pre-COVID, right? And Sarah joining us this year, but no, we thank you very much for your help. It's good to hear what's happening at the high school and be able to kind of have that face time at our different school committee meetings, so we're very appreciative of that. And we both wish you very well in college next year.
Thank you.
Right, and I think that on behalf of the school committee, and we can't thank you enough. It's certainly a commitment of time to prepare for these meetings and then to be here at these meetings as well. And we really value the student input. It's been nice working with you for the last three years. It's been great having you onboard for this last and final year. And we look forward to having more Chelmsford High students come forward and offer their perspective and thoughts on, you know, how things are going within the school district and to help us reflect on the decisions that we make. But you two have done an awesome job. And, you know, it's very clear from the time and dedication that you put into this that you're going to have very successful futures. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
On behalf of the school committee, if you'd like to come up, we'd like to give you a little parting gift.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Lang, moving on.
All right, moving on to, we do actually have a lengthy agenda tonight, so we're gonna jump right into it. Second item on the agenda tonight is a spotlight on the school. So as you know, each one of our meetings, we highlight some of the work that's taking place at one of the schools in our district, and tonight we're happy to have Principal Rob Asselin and the Harrington Elementary School with us. So, Rob, I'd invite you up. We'll have you grab a chair and come right up to that main table.
Do you want us to all come up to this table?
Yeah, we just have to make sure we're speaking into the microphone, just for the viewing audience at home to be able to hear us. But yeah, if you want to pull three chairs up, that'd be perfect. And I'll let you do the introduction.
All right, thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here. It's a pleasure for Harrington to be represented tonight at school committee. With me tonight is, Lindsay Albert is our school counselor, and Dr. Marlena Barasso is our school psychologist. So for our presentation tonight, we decided to dive into the social-emotional interventions this year in school. You know, over the past two years, two-plus years, we kind of have been talking about what the students coming out of COVID were gonna look like, what they were going through, and what challenges we were gonna face as a school once we got back to some form of a normal schooling. So this year, you know, coming October, we kind of knew right away that the students that we're seeing come through were much different than pre-COVID. So we, as a team, a collective team here, Karen, also Karen Grabowski could not be here tonight, but she was certainly part of that, put our heads together to try to come up with some ways to maybe add on to what the district has already provided for social-emotional awareness and learning that we felt would be best for Harrington in identifying critical needs and skills that the students might have, you know, lost over the past two years of isolation and restriction. So with that being said, we're gonna talk about post-pandemic students for Harrington, the database decision-making that we came up with, implementation of interventions for Tier 1, 2, and 3, Circle Forward Restorative Practice, and then moving forward and how we'll continue moving, you know, as we continue to move out. So introduction, hello, we just kind of went through all that. You can keep going. So this was our thought process. So COVID-19, again, we had all these anticipations of what students may lose over the pandemic, whether it be academic or social. So we thought about that. So what we put together this year was meeting students where they're at and putting together resources that we had available. And then we took upon ourselves to introduce a new SEL perspective to adjust our approach to the students and where we could better support them moving forward. This is just a message that I sent out to the staff at the beginning of the year. I'm not gonna read it. Pretty much laying out the thought process to let the staff know again this is what the expectations were. Basically, the message is, this is not a pre-COVID situation. So we can't walk into the year thinking that we're walking into a pre-COVID school year with pre-COVID students with the same pre-COVID issues and skill development. So that's pretty much what that was. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Barasso.
Okay, can you go to the next slide, please? So the goal of our screener, it's a universal screener. It's also kind of coined at database decision-making because that's really important to us that we're using data to inform our interventions, especially when you have a school that's as large as we do at Harrington with about 500 students, right? So the goal of the screener was to have an objective measure to discuss students' social-emotional needs. In the past, teachers were, to me, with a school counselor and have more, in my opinion, subjective ratings of students who were struggling with their social-emotional needs. And so we wanted to make it a little bit more objective. The second goal of the screener was to, of course, identify students who require additional supports to grow in specific areas of social-emotional learning. And third is to be able to use that data to notice trends and patterns across the school. So look at the whole school level, grade level, and classroom level so we can figure out where we need to target our interventions and build support to build capacity for the whole school. Go to the next slide. So these were the four different domains that we came up with just based off of generally things that we see students struggle with, internalizing issues, which is more, you know, acting in, issues, self-esteem, anxiety, depression. Externalizing, more of the acting-out behaviors. Again, we're really big on teaching our students emotional regulation skills. We were always doing that, but especially post-COVID, we've seen a lot of challenges with our students with emotional regulation, executive functioning, those are all the skills you need to be successful in your classroom and to learn and to be organized and emotionally and behaviorally and cognitively regulate yourselves to be ready for learning. And then lastly, social, and this is a big one. This was something that we knew would be an area that we needed to really kind of beef up and supplement with additional interventions. Go to the next slide. So I, along with the BCBA, had developed, we had started talking about this in the spring of last year, to figure out a way to come up with a subjective way, a systematic and efficient way to identify the students who are in need of Tier 2 supports. And I'll get more into the tiers in a minute. So we introduced, we developed a screener in the early fall, and we introduced it to all of our classroom teachers at an October staff meeting. And then the teachers were given dedicated time by our admin to complete the screener for each individual student in their classroom. So we had a pulse on every student in the entire school and how they were rated based on a series of a number of questions. And then we, as a team, a building team, a small team, reviewed that data and decided how we could feasibly implement the interventions for each of these students. Go to the next slide. So here is our screener timeline. And I mentioned, you know, Phase 1 is when we had introduced the screener. We piloted the screener to see how it went. And we took information and adjusted those, the feedback from teachers, as well as just looking at the numbers of students that were identified, and we adjusted the sensitivity of those questions so we were able to capture the students. And we had changed the cutoff score just slightly there. And then we screened again in January with those adjustments. And I'll mention that, obviously, once we had that information, we implemented interventions for Tier 2. Primarily Lindsay had implemented several of those interventions over a 68-week period. So then, back in January, we had teachers screen students again. And now we're currently at the end of the other 68-week intervention phase where we're looking at screening again for our final screener of the year to be able to compile that information for the fall. And we'll be continuing to make improvements into the fall for Phase 4 and figure out how we can continue to improve the screener. Okay, so this is the really interesting and fun part, the implementation of interventions. So all students are receiving Tier 1. And what we've done in the past is we've had the school counselor and some other members of the school go right into the classroom and provide whole-class lessons with various things like social thinking, other curricula. We, this year, I had worked with Lindsay Albert on training teachers to implement restorative practices, circles at the Tier 1 level, which is a way to, there's an SEL component to those that we'll get into a little bit later. And we also have PBIS initiatives happening as well as our social-emotional curriculum, Second Step, so all students are receiving these interventions. And so we really wanted to figure out, oftentimes, Tier 2 is the one that's really kind of missing in a school where there isn't, you know, a systematic way of identifying those kids through Tier 2. So that's really, obviously, what our intention, our goal was. And using that information to figure out who are the students who don't respond to Tier 2 that need more Tier 3 supports, which are more intensive and individualized. And so this is our data at a glance. We, and we'll see the graphs, the data, in a minute, but about 88% of our students were considered low-risk. So if you're looking at a typical multi-tier systems of support triangle, that's the students that are in the green, at the bottom half of the triangle. And then Tier 2, with 9% of students were the ones who are considered moderate risk for any given social-emotional area or domain. And then Tier 3 are those students who don't respond to their Tier 2 interventions and need more support and are considered high-risk for needing more intensive support. And so we had passed out some information for you. This is what the teachers, this is their view. This is what they receive for each of their students. Names are up at the top, and then they are rating them. And we also provided a sheet where we give the, this is the actual rating. So they're rating each of their students on a Likert scale of 0 to 4. So you have those questions in front of you there, and there's a dropdown menu for the teachers to rate each student. We can go to the next slide. And so this is the readout that the teachers receive based on their classroom. And this is the information that then is generated into spreadsheets for us so that we have a very clear view of the students in that classroom or in that grade level as well that need, if you can see on the right-hand side, the students that are grouped, that data is pulled into that table. So we know the students who are identified at Tier 2 and Tier 3 for the social internalizing, for those four domains. And here is just some more data that we have from October. On the left-hand side, you see a breakdown of the number of students who were identified as high, moderate, or low-risk, and then the percentages of those students. And then at the bottom-left-hand corner, you see by grade level. To the right, by domain. And then up top, we see a whole school view. And so we've really dug into this data, and if you can see, the 14% is the executive functioning domain. That was something that we responded to. We were able to use this data to figure out what type of supports we needed to implement at a whole-school level and classroom and individual level. We can go to the next slide. So Lindsay. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay, so as Marlena said, there was a lot of whole-school interventions that were already in place, including Second Step and PBIS. I know this year, Second Step switched to virtual, and I've heard amazing feedback from multiple teachers and students. They're way more engaged, and they feel like they can get the lessons across, and it has more of a conversation instead of just the teachers holding the cards. So I've heard really good feedback about it switching to virtual. And then we also do PBIS with our whole school, so we really teach students about the three Rs: respectful, responsible, ready. We have a paw tracker, so if students earn a paw, the teachers can load it into the paw tracker, and the students can celebrate. We have refresher lessons, so hallway expectations, lunch expectations, and then whole-grade meetings, so the older students, like the 4th graders, have an opportunity to go down to maybe a kindergarten class and teach them something about the three Rs, which the kindergartners really love, and the 4th graders. And then for our Tier 1, so Marlena mentioned that executive functioning was a big need based on our screener data. So Karen, our assistant principal, did a whole staff training, which was amazing. I personally even benefited from it, even though I'm not a classroom teacher. And then we also had whole-class lessons on social skills and self-regulation. We pushed into a lot of first grade for this. And then for restorative practices, Marlena was initially the expert. This was what her dissertation was on in grad school. So her whole thesis was on restorative practice. And I was lucky enough that she took me under her wing and trained me, and we were able to train the whole staff. And we'll talk about circles more towards the end. But we've been really focusing, especially at the end of this year, on trying to implement whole classroom lessons on restorative practice using the Circle curriculum. And then for Tier 2, based on the screener, I had many groups throughout the year, small groups across grade levels focusing on coping skills, self-esteem. And it was really just pulling from the data that we gathered from the teachers, which, for me, this is my first year at Harrington, getting to know the staff and the students was extremely helpful. Instead of having to go around and talk to every single teacher, it was nice to just look at the data. If I have a student in my group, I can kind of look back to the data and really try to focus on a specific skill that I felt like they were lacking in. So it's really nice to have that data accessible at all times. And I've also been utilizing the circles in a more Tier 2 way. So for the ongoing conflicts among peers, trying to develop the pro-social behavior, encouraging them to have conversations about their conflicts instead of gossiping and coming to me and then trying to get both sides of the story. I felt like I was a little bit of an investigator. So just having the opportunity to have the Tier 2 circles has made a huge impact that I can already see in a short amount of time. And then for Tier 3, for some of the students that have been in a Tier 2 group with me, we felt like they needed a little bit more. So some teachers volunteered to do check-in, checkout in addition to the Tier 2 groups. And it's not up here, but also, Marlena mentioned it, the outside referrals, individual counseling. We've been utilizing CareSolus a lot, which has been really helpful. Family and staff seem to really like that resource that is new to us. So that's also part of our Tier 3 intervention. And moving forward, so we're really trying to focus on taking all of the screener data, learning all of the resources we have about restorative practice, and make that our focus as a whole-school option for next year for teachers, since all teachers have been trained and slowly are starting to use it. So for circles, they can be used to address a single incident or an ongoing issue in a classroom or at a smaller level. It prevents problem behavior, so there's a whole curriculum. It's a book, and the nice thing about it is you don't have to come up with the lessons. You can just, if you're having a problem with a friendship or someone's feeling left out, you can just flip right to that page, make a copy. And once your students know how to do the circle, they can hop right in and join and try to prevent the problems from continuing. It creates a safe space for all of the students. So the nice thing about it is, as a staff member, you are an equal member of the circle. So you're modeling it, so you ask a question and then you answer, and students have the chance to pass, but it makes them feel like they're being heard and valued. And you also have an opportunity to share, because a lot of the times, the teachers can get caught in the middle, and students don't think about how it's affecting the teacher. So it's nice that you're an equal member, and it just creates and builds community in the classroom. And then some examples you could do at the Tier 1 level. Relationship building, class values, the impact of bullying, social problems, understanding trauma, effective communication, conflict resolution. The list goes on and on. You can really do anything you want with it. Or, and if there's nothing in the book, you can come up with your own, which is nice. And then we've been using it as a tool to build community, like I just said, establishing norms, so that class expectations, this is where teachers could incorporate the three Rs from the PBIS. In the Circles curriculum, they talk a lot about values, so it could give teachers a chance at the start of the year to develop those classroom values, talk about the three Rs, and then that can turn into class expectations. And then every time they do a circle, it could be a review at the beginning about what the classroom values are. And maybe people are not following the classroom values, and it makes, it gives everyone an opportunity to have a conversation about it. It improves relationships amongst staff, amongst peer. Staff couldn't even do circles if they're having a problem with each other. So it really just helps foster conversation, build community, and work through differences. So especially, as Rob said, post-COVID, there's just been a lot of social struggles for students, learning those pro-social behaviors, social pragmatics. And this gives them the language when they're having those problems. We model it, they join in, and it's just a great opportunity for learning. And the next slide, you'll just see some of the examples that we've actually already done at Harrington. So we've done a lot on friendship. I know a 2nd-grade teacher did one on feeling left out. I handed out a copy for everyone on coping with loss. So the reading curriculum for the 4th grade this year is, they had a new part of it that was coping with loss, and they weren't really sure how to navigate it. So they've been practicing circles with their class, and they pulled me in, and we did a coping with loss circle with every 4th-grade classroom. And it was really eye-opening and a great opportunity for students to share about loss that they've had in their life. And if you look, you can see how structured it is. So there's an opening, a check-in, questions, and then a closing. So, and once students learn that format, like I said, they can just jump right in. They know what to expect. There's a talking piece, so if you're holding the talking piece, you're the only one talking. The talking piece can be something of value to the class, so the students really enjoy it. They might be a little uncomfortable at first, and they might pass, but then once they hear other kids speaking, they're like, oh, can I see the talking piece? And they want to join in, so it's nice to see that. So these are just some of the examples that we have done so far, and hopefully we'll be able to do a lot more next year, moving forward.
So we recognized early on, in very early fall, that we were gonna have a different look, like I had mentioned in the beginning. You know, we knew that the students were gonna come back, even though their restrictions weren't as severe as they were the year before, they were coming masked. And there was still that one element that kind of held them to a specific format. And for some reason, it was glue that kind of held them together from moving throughout the day. But, you know, we anticipated that at some point during the year, you know, with restrictions maybe possibly lifting, that what it was, we weren't really gonna see what it was gonna look like till it occurred. And Second Step is an amazing program, and these teachers are utilizing it as well. This is more of a specified add-on to Second Step. The Circles, at least, kind of gives them just a little bit more of a specific type of a format for really having conversations that you may not have in Second Step. So it's just an add-on to it to kind of get a deeper into that Tier 2 look when it comes to the students and some of the problems that they're experiencing. We, that screener is important because that is the pulse of the whole entire building. So that is, you know, all 475 students based on teacher input. That's them knowing the students based on who they are and how they present, and that is really what drives that bus and gets us to where we need to be. And then it incorporates the groups, and then we train the teachers on the interventions in the groups. We're modeling that for them. So they've taken that information, and it also gives them a better understanding of student needs in their classroom. You know, not strictly the academic component, the other components, that social-emotional component which impacts academics. So it also develops that relationship with the students and the teacher because they're getting a deeper look at that student based on their observations. So, you know, for a school, the Circles has been positively received. You know, the students are appreciating the conversations. It is a safe environment for them to be able to talk. There's an accountability component to Circles, which is very important, I think. Students accepting responsibility and accountability, especially when it comes to social norms, is huge, because unless you really have that awareness and that accountability component, you're not really gonna be able to change and move from a particular behavior. So the group, you know, the collective group that put this together really was very thoughtful with it, very articulate with it. It's an intelligent approach to taking a look at this new post-COVID student. And the data does reflect pretty accurately on what we have in the building. So as a school, you know, we're kind of embracing it on top of everything else, which has been good. So with that, if there's any questions?
Does anybody have any questions?
Does anybody have any questions?
Can I make a comment?
Uh, sure. I, I actually, can I ask a question?
Sure, absolutely.
I do have a question about the screener. Um, does it have a name? Did you develop it? Is it something like Adessa?
It's similar to Adessa. We um, we developed our own because screeners, universal screeners can be pretty costly.
Right, oh yes.
And so I had been trained in previous screeners in, in other districts and through my, my doctoral training. Um, but so we thought of, of putting together these domains so that they were more specific to our school. So there's lots of other screeners where there's overlap, but we don't have a name yet for it.
I guess, I apologize. What I was trying to get is, so you developed the questions, the metrics, did the data collection, compiled the data, and you did all that?
Yes.
That's amazing.
Yeah.
That is absolutely amazing.
Our previous BCBA was a guru with Excel. So she really was the master when it came to putting those tables together and connecting the data and stuff like that.
That, that's really just unbelievable. That's a tremendous amount of work. So thank you very, very much for doing that. Um, and then with, with regards to the restorative um circles practice, you mentioned that there was a book. Is that something that you developed as well? Oh, no? Okay.
No, it is a Circle Forward is the name of the curriculum.
Oh, okay, Circle Forward, yes.
Out of Suffolk Universities or Sort of Justice Institute, which I was trained in, in order to train teachers for my dissertation.
Okay.
Um, a, a few years ago.
All right. Um, I do have a question about the screener. Is that something that is available for schools if they would like to use it school-wide? Would that be something that could happen, your screener? The questions and whatnot, could other schools use those questions if they wanted to?
I mean, what typically happens is um district-wide, we do have like the schools, there's an overarching kind of SEL committee that would be working on this stuff. But if different schools find a particular practice that works really well for them, they would kind of report it back to the larger group. And then, you know, potentially it could be something that gets adopted, even like level by level. It wouldn't necessarily have to be middle high school. But um usually we let things run for a good um year, a good cycle.
Yep.
And then evaluate the progress, gets reported out to the group. And um certainly, I mean, the decision could be made to do something like that. And another school might be piloting something else that they would compare at the same time.
Right.
That's a great point, Dr. Ling. Yes, do other schools use what systems work for them? And so coming into Harrington a few years ago, I saw the system that was in place. And I thought, well, I have this training and I have something that could potentially be more systematic and efficient. And we have so many students to identify. It just allows us to quickly do, do that. And then hopefully see students respond to the tiered interventions and then be able to sort of either exit tier two interventions or receive more at tier two or tier three.
Well, I just want to thank you because it's just a tremendous amount of work.
Thank you.
It deserves to be acknowledged, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, Donna just made the comment that I wanted to make to you. I'm sitting here going, wow, that is a tremendous amount of work. It's innovative. It is just, it makes me so proud of being part of the district that you would have done this for every single student in the school. Um, is really just, I am so happy at this moment that this just happened. Um, so thank you. And the other thing I was thinking is, wasn't there some additional monies available and so on for creative type of um education? I, I'll go back to it. I remember when the chapter seventy thing happened, there was something about that in programming. And I'll go back to it and I'll bring it back to just see. But this is just tremendously amazing, great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
We should recognize Katie Sap was the BCBA uh who did help facilitate with the, the creation of that spreadsheet. You know, her expertise when it came to that was pinnacle in the whole process.
I mean, if I'm a student there, I would feel totally treasured, cherished and a parent the same way. And that you recognized that this would be such an important thing coming back into this year and just did it. Um, hey, kudos to you. Really amazing.
John?
Uh, just, just a quick comment. As a parent of a post-COVID middle schooler, I appreciate the work you're doing and, and the amount of effort you're putting into it because those kids definitely need it. Not saying anything about Ella specifically, but generally, generally, but thank you.
All right. Is there any other questions? Well, thank you very much for.
Thank you for having us. Appreciate it.
We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Next up on the agenda is.
Yeah.
The Chelmsford High School uh Seal of Bilinguality.
Correct. So we're going to welcome up Jessica Nollet, who is our coordinator for World Languages and Exchange Programs. And she's got some students from Chelmsford High School uh who have earned their seal of bilinguality here this evening. So we'll turn it over to Jessica.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. It's a pleasure to be back here tonight. Um, I have some great news and some amazing students behind me. Uh, the Massachusetts State Seal of Bilinguality is an award that recognizes graduating seniors who have demonstrated proficiency in English and a world language. Students who have received this award have demonstrated they have an intermediate-high proficiency level in the areas of reading, writing, listening, and speaking in a world language. Uh, this is the third year that we've offered the Seal of Bilinguality in Chelmsford. We had thirty-seven seniors test for this award, the most ever. And twenty seniors have um received the seal of bilinguality. Students tested in Spanish, French, Portuguese, Hindi, Chinese, Urdu, Korean, Malayalam, and Arabic, which is a testament to the wonderful language diversity that exists in our Chelmsford community. Several students tested in multiple languages and two seniors have earned the seal of bilinguality in two languages, Sophia and Irina, who are here tonight. Um, these students will be recognized at the senior awards ceremony in June. They will have a special seal affixed to their high school diploma to demonstrate their bilingual or trilingual abilities to colleges, universities, and future employers. Uh, students will also receive a letter from the Department of Education presenting them with a voucher uh to take a future MTEL exam in the hope, for a teacher licensure in the hopes that many of these students will become educators in the future. So it's my honor to be here tonight with some of the seniors who have earned the seal of bilinguality this year. They couldn't all make it because the seniors are very busy. There's a lot going on now, but we have a lot of them here. Um, and I'm going to ask them to come up and introduce themselves to you in whichever language uh they would like. I was going to have you guess the language, but we're not going to do that.
Thank you.
We appreciate that.
I'll just do it. I'll do it.
Yeah, if you want to.
Um, hello, my name is Irina and I earned a seal of bilinguality in Spanish and Russian.
Hello, my name is Cara Demopie and I earned the seal in Spanish.
Hi, I'm Laura Solomon and I earned the seal of bilinguality in Arabic and uh LOC Bilinguality Achievement Award in French.
Hi, my name is Ruby Collins and I earned the seal in Spanish.
Hi, my name is Shoma Kandu and I earned the seal in Spanish.
Hi, my name is Fu Watson. I earned the seal in Spanish and I earned the LOC Bilinguality Award in Urdu.
Hi, my name is Adrian Fong and I've won the seal of bilinguality in French.
Hello, bonjour. Uh, my name is Larry Yang and I earned the seal in French.
I knew that word. My grandmother was French.
Hello, or ouah. Uh, my name is Joey Baker and I earned the seal in uh Spanish.
Hello, I'm Abdul. I earned the seal in Korean.
Hola, bonjour. Um, my name is Sophia and I earned the seal of bilinguality in French and Spanish.
Could you maybe just give a quick little overview of exactly what goes into earning the seal?
Sure. Um, to demonstrate the English portion of the exam, uh normally it's based on MCAS scores. That wasn't the case this year because this particular class um wasn't required to take the ELAMCAS. So it was just um demonstrating that you have passed your current English class. Um, and to demonstrate the world language part, there's an online assessment that students take. Um, for most of them, it was called the Stamp for S Assessment, which is a computer-based assessment um with a section in reading, writing, speaking, and listening. Um, and the speaking and the writing are graded um by an actual human somewhere else um that assesses them. And then some of them, like for the exams in uh Urdu and some of the other ones they did was a different type of exam, but they're mostly computer-based. Some of the uh less commonly spoken languages from around here are done via something called an OPI, which is basically like a phone interview with a native speaker of that language. That can be pretty intense, um up to twenty-five minutes. So it's a, it's a high level of achievement that many of these students um have been awarded so far. For some of them, it's a home language. For some of them, it's a language that they've studied in school. Um, we're going to offer this opportunity every year. So it's important to me that the Chelmsford community and the rising seniors know that this opportunity is going to be open to them um in any language that they speak or study. And we want them to take advantage of that because it's a huge honor.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Sharing with us. I'll just let them go.
Mm-hmm.
Do you want to just go tell the girl we're having trouble again? All right. Uh, fourth item on the agenda this evening is just a little update for you. Um, the Chelmsford High School, um I know we've talked about this in previous meetings, had applied for uh some program approval to offer some additional pathways at the high school. And uh a copy of the letter is attached, but the high school was just awarded um approval from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, excuse me, to offer an innovation pathway program in life science and manufacturing. And again, that ties in with some of the um college career readiness uh program we have in going at the high school and also the dual enrollment programming. Uh, so we're very happy that they received that um, that approval. So just sharing that with you this evening.
So this will be our sec, third, and fourth pathway. So we already had the business pathway and the IT pathway. So now this will give us our third and fourth and final one.
All right?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, it was just for information purposes, but the high school is excited about getting it. They worked really hard to get that. So we're happy for them. Uh, fifth item on the agenda this evening is a presentation. Um, we have Nancy Antolini. Um, welcome her up to the microphone. Do you want to do that?
Yeah.
All right. Why don't, yeah, if you don't mind helping her with the chair. We're getting a little bit of feedback. We're just trying to, to work through.
Thank you.
Um, Nancy is our Director of School Nutrition. And annually, she comes in to do a little year-end review for us and talk a little bit about um the current program and what's been happening this year, what would be anticipated happening in the future years. So we're going to let Nancy present for us.
Well, thank you for having me. I think we skipped last year, but with that. Um, and I just want to start off by really um saying a real big shout-out to the food service staff in the last two years, what they have done and what we've achieved. And you'll see by the numbers, it's, they've, they're an exceptional team and we really have built a team. So um I just want to do a shout-out for them. Um, so we begin with the number of meals we served as of April thirtieth. This time, I'm, usually I come at the end of June and you can get the whole year in view. But this time, it's just up till April thirtieth. So um as you can see, in 2021, with um free lunches, we served one hundred and eighty-eight thousand five hundred and fifty-four breakfasts. But currently, we're at one hundred and ninety-five thousand eight hundred and thirteen. And let me add a lesser staff than we had previously because a lot of people have retired. Um, our lunches, um, right now, um, our lunch is at, um, with three hundred and sixty-seven thousand six hundred and seventeen. We're currently at in April. And last year, we were at one hundred and ninety-nine, eight hundred and fourteen for the school year. So um as you can see, the total's there, um totally so far, five hundred and sixty-three thousand four hundred and thirty lunches. And we still have um April, May, and June. I'm thinking I only have May and June, um but April, May, and June. And then we also, um, twenty twenty-one was three hundred and eighty-eight thousand three hundred and sixty-eight. So we've grown quite a bit. So um that's a great one. So um uh breakfast and lunch pricing, I'm here to ask for, recommend that if we could have an increase. Um, the breakfast and lunch for the school year twenty twenty-one was at no cost to all the students due to the USDA federal funding. The USDA federal funding guidance for next school year is that schools will return to the traditional model of free, reduced, and paid meal options. That's currently where we're at. USDA has already voted against having free lunches for all. The paid breakfast, the paid.
I disagree with that, but I'm on a local level, so I can't do anything about it.
The paid breakfast and lunch price needs to be greater than the amount of the USDA reimburses the district for free and reduced meals. Amount will be known after July first. Unfortunately, um they don't let us know. We've had many calls about this, but it's after July first. So we really don't know what our reimbursement will be for next year. Um, since free and reduced breakfasts and lunches cannot subsidize the uh paid meals, that's why we were looking, if possible, to have an increase for next year. So we based it on um, our last increase was a few years back. I've been here five years and we haven't increased so far. So our high school and middle school currently, I'm, I'm sorry, I'll start with breakfast. Right now, breakfast across the board is a dollar fifty. We'd like to see it raised. We recommend it be raised to a dollar seventy-five for all schools. Our high school and middle school lunches are at three-ten. We would like to see that in an increase of three-twenty-five. Our elementary schools currently are two-sixty-five. We're just looking to look for um two-seventy-five for recommendation. So um.
Do you want to go to the next slide?
Oh, there's one more. A little bit. So the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Legislature is considering a waiver for free breakfast and lunch for all students for next school year um in the FY twenty, twenty-two-three budget. If that item is included in the FY twenty-two-three budget, breakfast and lunch will remain at no cost to all students. And as of today, that won't be known until July first.
Are you hearing anything through your groups that you're associated with? Like are they making any inroads to the state legislature or?
Um, well, we, I was at the State House today. Um, speaking with legislature, um Senate and House, Rep, the House of Reps has passed it. And that um is now in Senate. And then if Senate passes it, of course, it'll have to go to um Governor Baker. So that's where we're at so far. Um, other, uh, you know, the um states have passed it, but Massachusetts is a little slow moving. But we'll know that after July first, as they explained to us today. So um on our procurement, um it's going to be, we're opening actually our bids on a day early. We'll be opening our bids tomorrow. So um paper is currently out to bid. Um, dairy is a rollover and we're at Rosev. Grocery is again currently out to bid. Uh, bread is Fantini and that's a rollover. And our gills pizza is going to be a rollover. So we're happy about all those. So the accomplishments in um twenty-one, twenty-two for um the food service is um the increase of meals. It's over forty-five percent participation at each of the schools. We re-evaluate the needs of the school district and adapted the plans to meet those needs to serve breakfast and lunch at each site. Because every site now does have um breakfast in the classroom, except of course the secondary levels. Everyone does go down to the um cafeteria to receive breakfast. Um, we introduced new menu items from scratch cooking recipes. We're still working with the chef. She's still with us and it's great because we've tried some new ones just recently too. Um, meals are still prepared in the state-of-the-art equipment at the high school and delivered to the elementary schools on a daily basis. Um, we ordered the final set of the cafeteria tables for the three schools and completed the multi-year cafeteria table refresh program, project. The grand opening of the new Paka Kitchen in Hungry Lion Cafe happened this year. Paka staff received training on all the new kitchen equipment at the Hungry Lion Cafe. Um, all staff again received their monthly sanitation training. All staff received three PD days of in-house training, strength training, which was great. They love that. Um, and we reviewed the national school lunch program because the guidelines and everything will be changing again. Um, review of the um production records and our inventory trainings. We continue to develop professional relationships with the staff and the wellness committee. We were, I worked with the wellness committee this year. And um I am continuing leadership roles in the SNA of Mass. So the future is to implement the mobilization of the McCarthy School in the Westland kitchens with capital funding. Um, we're looking at state-of-the-art fitting machines and stack room at the high school. Um, we're enhancing the cafeterias with updated paintings and storefront murals. Um, we're adding the theme days to the menu and program of eating through the alphabet that we discussed at the wellness committee at elementary schools. And we will also continue to be serving lunch and breakfast at all the schools, using the high school still as a commissary to prepare elementary school meals for delivery. Hire new staff to keep up with expanded participation. Update nutritional information using a new software program, which is. Update nutritional information using a new software program, which is, parents will go and love this. Grow still professional development team building for the school nutrition staff. And continue with the chef because she would love to come back next year. And so that will develop more scratch cooking recipes that, with all of this with COVID and everything, that is really being, the state is pushing that more so with different grants and funding for buying local and preparing fresh. And improve our website and social media communications with students and families. And we have some things in the works for that, to be told, we develop it. So my professional accomplishments this year, besides being delivery, the president, I was the President-elect for the School Nutrition Association for this year. And next year, I will be the President of the School Nutrition Association of Massachusetts.
Congratulations.
Yes, thank you. So it'll be a lot of legislature next year, I guess I have to deal with. I've got to get very political very quickly. So that's where we're at. So the recommendations for the two positions that we would like to add to food service is one of them will be the School Nutrition Office Manager. Right now, currently, we have Joanna Balsky that works, and she'll be retiring at the end of this year. She's been with us 30 years, I think, in the Chelmsford Schools Food Service. And that'd be one. And then the other one would be Nutritional Operations. And that would be someone that would be working close spot with me and helping with the day-to-day, my job, you know, to help me through that. I don't know if you want me to read through them? Would you like me to read through them, or?
No, I would say, I think you covered most of the stuff during the presentation. A couple of things we do need to take some action on are the, the meal rates, because I think we all have enjoyed the fact that the program has not had a fee for the last couple of years. It's clear from Nancy and her groups that the state, the federal level is not going to do anything to adjust for that. We'll still kind of wait for the state level to see if they would. I think it's better for us and for our families, for planning purposes, to assume kind of worst-case scenario, that we actually go back to charging fees for those. Because if the state ever comes through over the course of the summer or whatnot, and they have a waiver, it's much easier to tell people there'll be a waiver, there'll be no charge. But just so that we can set up our systems and communications to parents, it'd be better to take the vote now. We always try to increase the minimum that we can to stay above that subsidized rate. So we're not looking to make drastic increases to the dollar amounts, but we, we cannot subsidize the cost of the, the food meals from the federal amount. So we basically go to the minimum. So it's really not like a negotiable type thing. This is the minimum amount, so we can go up to make the, the numbers work based on what we project will be that reimbursement rate for next year. So I do think we should vote to approve the, the rates as presented. And then, as Nancy mentions, one is an updated job description, because again, the individual's been in the role for a long time. So we'll need to get that job posted and advertised. And then there's a second position because of the size and the volume of work that's taking place. I do think it's important to note that the funding for that position is through the revolving fund, so it is not a position that's adding any impact to our local budget or town budget. The salary and benefits are paid through the revolving fund for food services. So it's a self-funded position. But we would recommend, the job descriptions are in there, we would recommend approval of both of those positions. One is an upgrade, upgraded job description, and one is a new position.
All right, so... What area do you want to go in?
Well, before we even leave, is there any questions for Nancy on any of the information that she presented?
Are you guys crushed?
Yeah. Thank you.
Really something.
Open the seats for you.
Thank you.
I have a comment. I just wanted to say that I'm on the Wellness Committee, too, representing us. And I know that Nancy plays a very important, you play a very, very important part of it. So I want to make sure that folks realize that you attend the meetings, that you contribute tremendously to the Wellness Committee, and it's really important. And it's throughout the entire district, not just, you know, school by school. It's definitely to the entire district, and I want folks to know that.
Yeah, before we get to the motions, you know, I think it's worth noting that Dr. Lang included a really nice paragraph thanking you, and I'd just like to read a little bit of it. I'd like to thank Ms. Antolini for her leadership in directing the school nutrition program over the past year. She has made many positive contributions to the program and continues to do great work as she shares her ideas for the next set of enhancements to the programs that are within our funding abilities. I would also like to thank the entire school nutrition team for their hard work commitment each day to our students, families, and fellow staff members of the Chelmsford Public Schools. And I know a lot of people won't get a chance to see that, so I really wanted to make sure that that was pointed out.
Thank you. That's very much appreciated. Thank you.
So I'm sorry.
I would love to take credit for that statement, but that was actually from Joanna. Joanna, Joanna had prepared the memo, so I don't want to take your words.
You know, Joanna, my apologies, because it actually does say, this is from you.
I'm speaking on behalf of all the leadership.
Right, right.
Yes.
That was very good.
Very, very sorry, Joanna.
Of the district, yeah. Thank you, Angie.
The one thing I would like to, if you don't mind, is I wanted to give Joanna credit for that, because you work incredibly closely with Nancy.
Absolutely.
It is an extreme honor to be named the, to the statewide position that you're in for next year.
Thank you.
So Nancy, you know, again, will be taking on more of a leadership out of her role, which not only benefits her in the food service program, but really, you know, Chelmsford, and she'll be able to kind of be a conduit of information. So that's great that your colleagues have voted you into that. It's a multi-year commitment. So I do want to recognize that. And really, from the very outset of the pandemic, the food service staff worked incredibly hard. When we shut down in March of '20, I can't believe, two years ago, that was the one department in the district with our custodians and facility staff that stayed open to provide meals and services. So you've worked incredibly hard. And I know it's been difficult to attract staff. Everyone, you and your group, have been working above and beyond. You know, we, we can't thank you enough for all that you've done.
Well, thank you. It's been, it's been a hot year, but actually a very good year, so.
Yes.
Very good year.
Joanna, again, my apologies. It's a very steep learning curve for this chairperson, very steep. Okay, with that, I will take a motion first for the breakfast and lunch prices for the 2022, 2023 school year.
I make a motion to increase the Chelmsford Public Schools breakfast and lunch prices to the following for the 2022, '23 school year. Breakfast at all schools, $1.75. Lunch at the high school and middle school, $3.25. Lunch at the elementary school, $2.75.
Second. Thank you. All right, are there any further discussion? All right, with that, I'll take, this has to be a roll call?
Be a roll call.
Roll call vote. Dennis?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Me? Aye, four zero. All right, and the second motion, is there any discussion on this? Okay, with that, I'll take a motion for, regarding the updated job descriptions and the, the new recommended position of Nutrition's Operations Supervisor.
You want them together, or you want them separate?
Let's do them separate.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the updated job description for the Chelmsford Public Schools' School Nutrition Office Manager as presented.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Four zero. Next.
I recommend a motion to approve the new position of Chelmsford Public Schools' School Nutrition Operations Supervisor as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Four zero for both. Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy. All right, moving along the agenda, we are at item number seven. We're going to ask Joanna to give us an overview of the student transportation program, a little bit of the year in review, and registration information for next year, and voting to establish the fees for that program. So turn it over to you.
Thank you. So we're going to talk about the bus. We're going to talk about this year a little bit, and then we're going to talk about recommending the same fees for families who have to pay to ride the bus, which is K to six. I'm sorry, I have a little chart. Everybody pays except K to six over two miles. It's the easiest way to remember it. And then lastly, just, there's a little flyer about how we're going to register for the bus next year, and we're going to have a new system called My School Bucks to register and pay for the bus. So this year, we had exactly, how many riders? 3,323 daily riders. So we're back up to our, our norm. Normally, we have 29 buses. This year, we went down to 27, mainly due to the nationwide bus driver shortage. So next year, we'll go back to the 29, hopefully. Again, the, the fee structure is everybody pays a fee except K to six over two miles. And then even if, even if you don't have to pay a fee, you still have to register to ride the bus, because we need to know where you are, so we can do the route and give you a bus pass and give you your times and your bus stop and all that. I have my little chart of when everybody registers, and the sooner in the summer, the better. If you wait till August, it's kind of crunch time. And last year, it was a crunch. About 25% of the people waited until August to register to ride the bus. I could understand last year because we didn't know, and coming back, and everybody in person, and, you know, changing from the cohorts. So hopefully, this next school year, families will feel more comfortable registering a little bit sooner than August. The next section is the 27 buses by school, how many students in total for that school rode those buses, and then the average count on the bus. So for example, the BiM has eight buses, 404 students rode the bus, and the average count on the bus was 51 students. The capacity is 83. And then just a refresher with families, the buses make three runs. First, they do the high school run, and then they make the middle school run, and then they make the elementary school run. And then the last page is just the summary of how we always try to improve. We want to know where you are so we can do an efficient route and give you a bus pass and kind of have a bigger bus stop so that the buses can move along and everybody can get to school on time. Try to register early, so we know about everyone, and there's not this big crunch in August. We're still working with the bus company and listening to families and make all the improvements we can. And last year, we're going to follow the same thing, you know, we set our route creation by August, and then just make minor tweaks to the bus stops later. And everybody should, we mail the bus passes in mid-August, and then you can look on the X2 Family Portal to see your bus number and your stop and the time. So that was kind of the year in review. Any questions?
Is it going to look any different for the parents signing up and paying the fees now that we have a new way of doing it?
A little bit. So the reason we're changing is because MCC E-School, which the district has used for years and years and years, is not offering the service anymore. So we had to make a decision of a new provider and did some research and talked to other districts and had some demos, and we went with this platform called My School Bucks. And the first two services we're going to try with this are sports and the bus. So we tried sports, thank you, Dan Hart. We tried spring sports as a first, and pretty well. His is a little different because you don't pay until you make the team, so it's a little bit of a difference. But in the bus, when you go on, you're going to pay right away. So we will have a little instructions when you click on the little flyer and what to do, and it's going to be very similar. One thing that's different is you don't have to have your, that big, long student ID. We're going to try the name and the date of birth and see how it goes. And if that doesn't work, we're going to just go back to student ID. But we have some friendly staff who happen to be parents who are testing for us. So we'll get that going, and then this is all going to go live June 1st. Did that answer your question? Yep.
There any other questions? Joanna, I'm not sure if you said this, but I'm not sure we can say it enough. They have to register even if there is no fee.
That's correct.
Okay.
You are correct.
So it's the same as it used to be?
It's the same as it used to be. The only change is instead of MCC E-School, it's going to be this My School Bucks. And, you know, for the families who had, at the high school who did sports, they were our test case, and then, so now the rest of the district will, 3,400 families will get a try, our students.
Yeah, the only real difference is just the interface on processing the financial transaction. Everything else is staying consistent. I think to Donna's point, and what we've talked about a couple, yeah, every year lately, everyone does have to sign up. But the earlier you sign up, the better data we have to create and generate the bus routes for the school year. So particularly if you are a no-fee family, sign up now, because it'll, it'll help us to be able to set those routes. If you can pay, and we'll, we'll get into the different pay dates and things like that, but if you can pay and get signed up, the routes will be created in early August based on your data. If you are a late August, or, you know, right the week before school starts, the routes don't get rerouted at that point in time. We have to be prepared to run the routes as designated, and then you would be assigned an existing stop along that route. So it's not as potentially convenient as if you just had your data in there and we knew that when we were creating the routes. They certainly make updates, but every time you change a bus route, you have to tell everyone on the bus that you're making a time change and a little bit of tweak to the, to the route, so it takes a little bit of time. So that does work itself out through the course of September at the start of the school year. But the easiest thing you can do to make sure that your address is recognized when they're creating the bus routes is to go in early and register. So we really do push that, and Joanna had put the dates a couple of times in the memo, where we're going to start creating routes and when you need to apply by, so that we have that data. So we just can't stress that enough. And then you did have the pay scale in there? I didn't know if you wanted to touch, touch base on that.
Yes. So the second section is a little one-page memo of the fees. So for what we call early registration, which is June 1st through July 4th, it would be, if you had to pay a fee, it would be $175 for the year and then a family cap of $400. And then the regular fee from July 5th through July 31st goes up a little bit, $200 for the year and a family cap of 500. And then if you wait and register August 1st, actually through the end of January, it's a little more, $2.25 per year with a family cap of $500. And then if you come to the district after February, it's $100 for the rest of the year and a family cap of 500. So that's no change. These have been the rates, I think, where several, like...
I don't recall them changing.
Yeah.
So they've been the rates for like at least eight years.
Yeah. So we just recommend the same?
It's more than, it's more the dates.
Yeah.
You know, that we're giving those grace periods to.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Joanna? All right. I'm sorry, did you?
It's the same fees.
It's the same fees, yeah. So with that, I'll take a motion to adopt these rates.
Make a motion to adopt the bus fee structure for the 2022, '23 school year and establish the regular, early, late, and half-year registration rates as presented.
Second.
All right, this will be a roll call vote?
It would.
Okay. Dennis?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Aye, four zero. Thank you very much. As always, very thorough.
Item number eight, the school committee liaison assignments.
So in your packet, you'll find an updated sheet of their school committee liaison assignments. Nobody contacted me. I didn't make many changes, a couple here and there. You'll notice that I did eliminate some of the committees that we were assigned to. The rationale behind that was, is that, you know, I figured that if, we weren't going to the meetings, it's always good to have a liaison, but chances are that if people had questions, like for example, the recycling committee, they were going to get in contact with the superintendent anyway. So, you know, rather than have that be an additional responsibility for us, I kind of pared down this list a little bit. We can take a look at it. If it's not working, I'm certainly open to suggestions if we feel like that we need to, you know, reinstate some of those things. But at this point, this really covers all of our school organizations and other boards and organizations that are related to the schools, as well as a liaison to the select board and our legislative responsibilities, so. And contract negotiations, of course. Does anybody have any questions, concerns, or thoughts? All right.
I ju, just one question. I saw something go out this week about the master plan committee. Are we on that at all?
I don't know. I can certainly check into that.
Just to see. I think that that would be an important thing.
Town's master plan committee? I don't know. Was it an email?
They have, they were looking for, I remember something.
It was from a town meeting rep, two town meeting reps.
Yes.
Yeah, let me look into that and see what that's going to entail.
That would be great.
It may not be that we have to be involved in the whole thing, but maybe that particular portion, you know, or... I'll talk to, I'll talk to the people involved and see what they think. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next.
All right. So just so you know, I'll update the, the Dropbox that we follow. I'll put the new one in after July 1st.
Great. I do, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
All of this. There is one thing for people who are listening. If at any point people want to have a school committee member come to their meeting, either to hear what they have to say or to ask for input, we are more than happy to do that. So people should not hesitate to contact us. You know, we are available and certainly willing to, to, to work with any town group, you know, if they should, if need so. So, thank you.
Item number nine, this is a discussion on the McCarthy Middle School tennis court study group or possibly putting one together later this spring to, I think, convene before the end of the school year and then maybe do some work over the course of the summer. If you recall, I put a memo together for you at town meeting. We had an article on to redo the tennis courts and basketball and street hockey at the high school. And there was also an item to begin to do something with the tennis courts at McCarthy that pertained to creating an additional parking area. There was then discussion around potential other uses for the site, pickleball, tennis, things along those lines. That piece got tabled at town meeting. We did get approval for the high school portion on high school campus. And then the other group, the other item was tabled. So I know individuals had reached out to town manager Cohen to kind of see if we could settle a study group on this. He had sent an email saying it really, in his opinion, falls under the purview of the school committee because the, the tennis courts are on school property. So I just included that in your packet. And then I, in working with Donna, I just took a, we don't have a lot of these type of committees. So I just took a look at like the policies to figure out what it would be. And there is a school committee policy if the school committee wants to put together a group. And it's a, kind of, it's more elaborate than if it were just a superintendent because there is also a policy that would have the superintendent put together a working group with, which is, I guess, is just less formal than the school committee policy. So I just provided both of those in your packet. And I indicated, you know, I certainly would like to be part of the discussion, but I'm indifferent with regard to if this was something the school committee wanted to take the lead on, putting together and having a formal committee or if it was something you wanted me to do. So I just thought we'd put it on the table tonight and, and talk about it.
All right. Does anybody have any thoughts on this?
So if you do it, is it all going to be people from inside the school? Or are we going to bring in, either path we go. Is it, we're going to have residents as part of the committee?
I, I guess the way I look at it, because again, the policy is, is a little bit flexible. It's really kind of who's driving the scheduling and whatnot. If it were, so either way, the school people would be kind of selected and put on the committee by myself. We would want community input, right? So if, if this was something that came under kind of my purview, you wanted me to take the ball and run with it, I would probably start with holding some kind of like an open meeting, an open session. You know, there's been a lot of different like visioning sessions and things like that lately. Some type of an open forum for just anyone who would want to have a conversation about the current property, what potentially could happen to it, to kind of see who the players might be that would want to have a discussion about it as a first thing. I would obviously like, from the school side, have a staff member or two from McCarthy just because it's on that property. I'd have the athletic director from my high school because, you know, potentially has an athletic kind of slant to it. And we would probably then just put together a working group. You know, we wouldn't have to post our meetings because they wouldn't be school committee meetings. So if you hold the meeting, which is totally fine, but there's going to be more than two of you there and you have a quorum, we'd have to post them as an actual meeting. It's just a little less structured. I would imagine if it was something you were going to take the run, the, the lead with and run with, you'd also want to have some kind of community input and putting a whole group together. So it's really just how formal or...
Could you just put two of us on the committee? If you did it? Like two of the committee members will be on it?
Yeah, I mean, you, I think the only problem would be if you ever had three. Because if you have three, you then have a quorum. But if you wanted to have one or two committee members be on it, I'm not opposed. I mean, I think it's something we all have to work on together anyway. It's just how formal do we want it to, to be or not? And that's why I just figured you, you guys should kind of have that discussion.
Dennis?
Yeah, I just, just reading the two, the two policies. I mean, as a school committee subgroup, it's just broader. It, it, I mean, the, basically you can make up the, the group any, with any demographic you want. Whereas the superintendent one, it's kind of, the way it's stated, it's reassuring staff participation and decision makings for the improvement of educational programs. So it seemed very narrow, narrowly defined of what it's supposed to be for and, and who. Again, I would trust if you were to lead the group that it would be inclusive of multiple groups. But I just think the way the policies are written, the superintendent one is more focused on education.
As usually, I mean, it is most usually more educational. Like, and I put together a working group for say like class size.
Right.
And we took, put one together for like the, what you want to call it? The middle school potential, you know, merger type thing. And yes, I started with a working group of school staff. But then, you know, you reach out to parents, the community to get their input and pull it all together. Whichever way we go, I think it has to be inclusive.
Right.
Like I said, I can go either way.
Yeah. No, I just, so I just, just looking at two policies, it just seems that the, the school committee policy is broader in terms of the scope of the work and the people, the composition of the, you know, the committee, that type of thing. So just my thoughts.
Is that your recommendation?
That would be my recommendation.
Your personal recommendation?
That would be my personal recommendation, yes.
Yeah, I'm on board with that. I think that's a...
I agree with that recommendation.
All right. Do we need to take a vote on that or can we just go with it?
It's your group.
Thank you.
We still have to get all the details together, right?
Correct. I just didn't know if we needed to actually vote on which policy that we were going to be...
No, I just gave them to, to, we're going to work together on it, you know, I, I hope anyway. But, no, I mean, you technically can do that. I think the chair would just actually, we'll go through the policy and kind of figure out who the players should be. I don't, we'll talk about the, the format. You know, you're basically going to appoint a group and you need to give them a charge of, you know, you'd like over the course of three months or six months or whatever to come back and to identify these things. So we can work on logistics if you want. But ultimately, the committee is going to have to appoint the members that you want in the group. And I'll appoint a few people from, like I said, McCarthy staff, Dan Hart, things like that.
Coaching, you know.
What's that?
Coaches, you know.
Yeah, some, they'll be representatives from the athletics groups and the school groups.
And community members, right?
Absolutely. That's why...
It may not end up being even sports related, right? I mean, they were talking about Parker lots and maybe a football court.
Well, sure. And I think we're going to have to take a look at all of those things because it's right next to the police station, right? You know, we have the DPW, we probably have to be involved. But when I said community, I was thinking about because the courts are used beyond our athletic programs. And I see Mr. Joe Ready sitting back there. So, you know, I know that he has a vested interest based on town meeting. And I've also received some emails from other community members as well expressing an interest, so. All right, so you and I will touch base.
If you want to do that and we can just kind of formalize what you'd like it to look like. I, not to speak for you. I mean, I think if we, just because of the timing, if we tried to have some kind of a kickoff session or meeting or whatnot, maybe right after Memorial Day, but before we lose people for the summer, just to kind of set some framework for what should happen. And I think actually the summer's a, a good time of year. People might have a little bit more flexibility in their schedule to, to convene and to discuss this. And we'll also just have to touch base back with the town manager and planning for, you know, if there is a recommendation, obviously we'd come back to the school committee. We need to coordinate something with the town manager's office. And ultimately, if we're ever going to go back to town meeting, would it be this fall town meeting? Would it be spring town meeting? So we just have to kind of coordinate schedules and logistics to make sure that we're all on the same page. But we can, we can lay that all out.
All right, so we'll have more on that at upcoming meetings. All right.
Item number 11 is acceptance of our end-of-the-year financial report. So I'll turn this over to Joanna. But before we do, I just want to recognize and again acknowledge Joanna's work and the work of the business office. It's another finding free financial audit for the district. And it's an incredible amount of work and effort that goes into this report. So thank you, Joanna, if you'd like to just kind of walk them through process wise.
Sure. So every year, the, we file our end-of-year report with Desi. And then, so that's due like in, by October 1st, every year for the prior school year. And then the external auditors come in, in February, March timeframe and then review it in a lot of detail. And then they make a recommendation on if, you know, anything was, needs to be corrected or if any processes need to be changed that you can have a better reporting structure for your district. I take it as an opportunity to learn from the auditors. It's always been very positive. And just would like to thank my team and the leaders, the department leaders because it's not the reporting, it's the day-to-day of putting, you know, coding everything right, getting your quotes, following your budget, implementing your plan. It's the whole year that all comes together in that big final report.
So this, this would be a motion to accept the financial report and place it on file.
Make a motion.
Make a motion to accept the report of the FY 2021, Desi End-of-the-Year Financial Audit Report as presented.
Second.
This is a roll call vote. It's, you don't have to.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure.
If you want to, you always can, but you don't have to.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Aye, four to zero. Thank you very much.
I should have a little...
Yes, yes.
That represents a tremendous amount of work. Thank you.
We'll stay with Joanna and have her give us an update. Now that we're done with 21, we're in 22. Have her give us an update on some additional assistance that's coming our way.
So you, we got a little extra money from the state that was for $86,606.43, very late in the year, you know, late April, early May. And this is just a little summary of what the state would like, why we got the money. And it had to do with enrollment changes, kind of not being very smooth, you know, from COVID and then through the past three years. So our district got this little extra bump. And it's unrestricted, meaning, you know, it's, we don't have to spend it on, you know, textbooks or whatever, like a grant. And it also can carry into fiscal year 2023. So you might have seen something like this. It was unique because it said Chapter 70 Foundation Reserve. So normally that just goes to the town and it's part of our Chapter 70 money, whatever that is, $11 million. But this one was specifically targeted to be under the purview of the school committee, not the town. And they even gave us more guidance on, you know, to record it like as a state grant so that they can make sure it goes straight to the school department and not anywhere else. So we have it set up as a grant. We will carry it over into next year because it's just too late in the year to put together a thoughtful plan for $86,000. And we'll keep you posted on what we spend it on.
Yeah, I mean, it's another good news story. And again, just the timing is, is difficult for us with fiscal year end. So we will carry it to 23, but then over the course of the summer, we'll make a recommendation to you as to how to go about spending it.
Thank you.
Next item is just a quick, kind of snapshot in time enrollment update. I usually do this in early, early to mid-May after we conclude the kindergarten enrollment. So we do a session in the winter, in the January, February timeframe. And then usually in April, we do our second kindergarten enrollment. And we try to take a, a look at where our, our numbers are at and make any adjustments. Whenever we put together the budget for the following fiscal year, we always just assume four grade levels or four classrooms at each grade level in each of the schools. So this is where we have to adjust a little bit. So if you look at, not the first, not the narrative memo, but if you look at the second page, it's a little chart that Jane McDonald, our registrar, gives us. But this is after the January and April school registrations. We have, just for you to read it going across the bottom, Biim has 89 students registered so far. Center, 71. Harrington, 59. And South Row, 73. So what I always do, we, we really try to keep the K1, 2 enrollments as close to 20. You know, really low 20s if we can in this time. And historically, we know that Biim and Harrington lately, over the course of the summer, have enrolled additional students. So Biim is already at 89. I spoke with the principal for debt and recommended we go ahead and offer a fifth section or add a fifth section. So we're in the process of posting and advertising for that. So that will be an extra teacher for us at that grade level. But what I'll do is come back to you when we're actually kind of settling our fiscal 23 budget because we'll have movement within the budget anyway based on other comings and goings and we'll account for that additional position. We also do have some families that don't have their kids come to kindergarten with us and then they enroll for the fall as first graders. So we always kind of track those numbers too. We really had a relatively insignificant number coming in this year. It's 10 total students and they're split out over the, the four schools. So at this point, again, just given the numbers, I recommended we go with a fifth section at Biim, but maintain the four sections at the other three schools for the time being. We'll continue to watch those numbers as the summer plays on. But again, my target for that grade level is 20, low 20s. If you look at the third page of the little report, I just did a quick little chart to just kind of show you the impact of those additional 10 kids coming in from first grade next year. So you see the current kindergarten numbers, again, which are very desirable. Average class size is, you know, 20, 20.4, 19, 18, 7, 5, and then 21. And even after we add in those 10 kids, we still have very, very desirable numbers, so. I'm not making any recommendations for increased sections of fifth grade. We're going to just keep the two fives that we already have. We have a fifth section at Biim and a fixed, fifth section at Center. Those will just factor up. But I think we're fine in, in first grade going across the district.
Our kindergarten number is low, 292? Because then you look at the three, is first grade 366 or 356 if you don't take the kindergarten kids?
We didn't get the enrollment in April that we usually do. That we, you know, this, this is why we're going to have to kind of monitor this. Because our projection at the elementary level has been an increase.
Right.
So yes, I mean, I would have thought it would have been closer to the 350.
Right.
I don't know exactly what's going on because this is the one year now where we have all the kindergarten that it's a little bit of a variable. So these students aren't in our school system. They don't necessarily have to go to our, say, CHIPS. Like, we know the CHIPS kids or the, even Alliance Pride kids coming up to the school for kindergarten. These might just be people living in the community that just haven't registered yet. There is no deadline, you know, for kindergarten registration, so it's rolling. So some people, you know, just might not be doing it. We may also have some people who fall within that window who are deciding not to send their child next year and they're going to wait a year and, and send them. Remember, we have that little, the policy with a little bit of play. So I don't know exactly, but right now, I'm not comfortable going with more than five sections at Biim. Biim can kind of certify it based on the numbers. But I don't think the, the other three schools would necessarily dictate a fifth section. If the numbers jump, I'll come right back to you and let you know that and we'll add another section. But just based on the numbers, I think it makes sense for Biim at this point to do that.
No, I just noticed a big gap there. I was wondering.
Yeah, we had, but if you look historically at the numbers, our April registrations were just down
Yeah.
from what we typically have. And the weather was beautiful today of the registration too. It wasn't even like a rain type thing or something. So we'll, we'll kind of keep monitoring that for you. And then Donna had just asked at the last meeting for me also, just to give an update on the, the middle school, the fourth grade transition to fifth grade. If you recall, I think it was two or three meetings ago, we talked a little bit about that transition from fourth grade to fifth grade. There is, and again, we had slightly for next year, based on geography, we had slightly more kids going to McCarthy than we did Parker. And at both Harrington and Biim schools, there's just a tiny little kind of geographical wedge of students that go to McCarthy instead of Parker. And we typically get requests from those parents because the kids have gone to school, most of them from kindergarten right up through grade four with their friends. And the friends then go off to Parker, but they go to McCarthy. So we reached out to those families because we know who they are. We gave them the option, would you like to go to Parker instead of McCarthy? And we had a good number that said, yes, they would. The ones that didn't primarily had other siblings or connections to McCarthy, so it made sense for them as a family, which was totally fine. But it's not going to have a big impact on us busing wise to have the students who wanted to go from Biim or Harrington to Parker. So those numbers have played out. We also do have some students each year unenroll and go to private and parochial schools for middle schools. So those numbers still aren't out. We won't get that until over the course of the summer. And then interestingly, even just since I produced this report, we've had two kids that were slated for McCarthy decide they're going to go to Parker. One was a move and one made a late, last-minute switch. So we're now at 210 and 194. So the numbers are, are getting a little bit closer on those two schools. Again, it is something we're working on. We are going to be taking a look at class size in general, but also that potential middle school reconfiguration piece, which in the long term will help. And it's not even that long of a term, you know, if we did this over the next year or so, could help on equity and kind of stabilizing those class sizes. As an aside, I did send an email communication out to families yesterday forwarded to you. Just invited them, we're going to do an in-person as well as a virtual session because I don't know what's going to be most convenient for people. Next Monday and Tuesday to just talk a little bit about some of our work at the middle school levels and that potential. But that is something that potentially could be the longer term fix to this scenario. So this is where it's at right now. I'll certainly keep you in the loop as we have these discussions. And this is obviously another group that I'm keeping an eye on number wise. You're seeing that delta between the two schools.
Yeah, no, it was a fifty this year.
It was a good forty off, yeah. I know it's coming, coming together.
Maria?
I think the email went district-wide, right?
Yeah, you know what? I didn't want to miss anyone. So we actually sent it out K-12.
That's great.
It went to all elementary, I'm sorry, all elementary, all middle and all high school.
That's great.
The more the merrier. So no one, no one should feel left out. It went out to everyone.
No, no, I think that's great.
Any other questions?
I just have a quick question. We're adding these sections of kindergarten to Byham and.
Just Byham right now.
Just Byham right now. I mean, we're already pretty, you know, tight for space.
Right.
You know, I can't imagine, where are we going to find space?
Another floor.
Okay, excellent. Yeah, oh, yeah, okay, all right.
They have, what's interesting is, I think they, do they have five fourth graders going out this year? There is room for the one more class. Where it gets really tight at Byham and even like Center is experiencing this at the same time. If we ever go out to all five grade levels, having five classes, it's really tight. And that's where you'd almost have to take back a specialist room to repurpose it as a classroom. We're not at that with Byham. If we ever had to add one more, then we would. But there's one grade level over there that only has four sections. And it's been progressing up through the school, so we haven't had to deal with that. But we are getting tight. I mean, even after putting in modular classrooms, the space is tight in some of these schools.
Just a question if I can, on the kindergarten thing and the registration. Because this is kind of worrisome in the sense that, you know, if three months, a couple of months from now, we suddenly have another seventy kids register. Did we do something different in terms of advertising for it or whatever, or getting it out there? No?
No, I mean, and with social media and things these days, we're doing more promotions than we ever have. It is odd that we didn't have the numbers come out in the spring. I mean, the winter numbers were pretty normal, but it is something we're tracking. I mean, it's not, if, let's say we did get another fifty students. It's not like they're going to all come from the same neighborhood. So I think what we've seen historically is they are spread out among these schools. You know, what's interesting is South Row really used to actually be the lowest enrolled. And we had to, for the first time, put in five sections a year ago at South Row. That was the first time ever. So there's definitely building and growth in that particular neighborhood. But again, I mean, this is something that I think the numbers support it. We definitely want to keep those K-numbers in the twenty range, and we're doing that. So if I had to come back to you and say, we're going to add another class, we would. But we'll do this kind of on a rolling admission. The nice thing about these schools now, all have, having had five schools, is they actually have the materials there. If they ever had to at the last minute, put another section in play, they can do that. Because we had to have the five sections over the last couple of years. So it's, you know, it's a hiring issue. Obviously, we've got to hire quickly. But we're in that process already. So we're already, you know, we actually have a, we're going to be posting now for that fifth section at Byham. So we're going to have a little pool of applicants if we ever had to go back out too quickly and add another, another body. All right.
Thank you.
Some more to come on that. Next, I'm going to just give you a quick COVID update. I feel like a nice COVID update for you. But this is the data that we've been providing for you each month. Let me just pull this up on the screen. And again, from the very onset of this, you know, pandemic, this is all the data that we have been, been tracking. So on our townwide vaccination data, again, this is a slide that we've just been updating. We're not really seeing significant growth in vaccination rates at this point. These numbers are relatively stable month over month. But within our five-to-eleven-year age group, we have about a seventy-two percent vaccination rate among individuals having one dose, a sixty-five percent overall vaccination rate. That means the children have received two full doses of the vaccine. When we move to our twelve-to-fifteen-year-olds, which are kind of middle school and freshmen, sophomores at the high school, we've got eighty-eight percent of students receiving at least one dose, eighty-one percent receiving two. So that number is still strong. And then we move into our sixteen-to-nineteen-year-old population in town, and they've got ninety-four percent receiving at least one dose and eighty-eight percent in overall vaccination rate. So those are very strong vaccination rates, even compared to our neighboring communities and our comparable districts. We really pushed a lot of the COVID clinics in the schools. Peggy and her nursing staff did a really good job with that. We have, at this point, for the rest of the year, kind of slowed down. We're not doing additional COVID vaccine clinics. We'll take a look at it as we come back to school in the fall, kind of gearing up if we need to do more. Local pharmacies have plenty of supply in the event that, and people wanted to receive the vaccine. But we'll help facilitate that again in the fall, going back to school if need be. But our vaccination rates are fairly, fairly strong. Even when you look at our vaccination rates by level, this hasn't really changed since the last time we looked at it percent-wise. But our high school has an eighty-six percent vaccination rate. Two middle schools are in the low seventies. And then our elementary schools lagging a little bit behind on that in the sixties. But again, when you look at other neighboring communities, these are strong vaccination rates. We're just going to keep putting out the ability and the information and encouraging people to vaccinate their children. Pool testing is still up and going in the district. This takes place weekly. Again, this is a free pool test. We highly recommend that people participate in pool testing, and you'll see in the next slide some of the data. We are starting to see, last week, we had a little bit of a hiccup in, in numbers. But you are seeing students testing positive who are asymptomatic. And that's kind of points to why it's so important to be doing this pool testing because we can kind of get that student out of population and not negatively impact others in their class or building by doing this. So this is a really important thing. We've got about seventeen hundred students participating district-wide, so this is still good. Not everyone, obviously, is in school the day they do the testing, so it's not a perfect science. But this is a totally voluntary program. It's still available. It's ongoing. You can register at any time. I'll be curious to know, this has actually been funded through June. I don't know what the state will do for next school year, but we're monitoring and kind of keeping an eye on that. So pool testing has gone well. In this next slide, we've been updating to the website all year. And you'll see, early in the fall, we really had lower numbers. Coming back from the holiday break, we increased for about three or four weeks. We had a little blip in the data. And then we kind of equaled out around the end of January. And last week, we tripled our case count. We were at seven the week before. We went up to close to thirty. So the numbers certainly did increase in a significant number, which you'll see in a second, with the result of those, the pool testing and identifying the asymptomatic kids in school. I do think it's important to note, you know, as a district, we participated in as many of these programs as we possibly could from the very get-go. And we've done, I couldn't believe the number, thirty-five thousand of these pool tests in district. And this is all administered at the school level by either school staff or the consultants and contractors that we have working. But that's a tremendous amount of tests that we've done and a lot of work that has gone into that. Our newer program, the At-Home Test Kits, again, still alive and well, and people are enrolling on a weekly basis. We usually see a little bit of a blip and people register. If there are a number of new cases in their school or their classroom, they register. This is an easy one for me. We've been promoting it from the very get-go. It does not hurt to have the test kits at home and to take a test kit on your own, take a test on your own, I'm sorry. And then if it's positive, you let us know. If it's not, you keep the data to yourself and you just get a test kit the next week. We've got over three thousand of these test kits that are going out on an every-other-week basis because there were two test kits there. But again, we're just still promoting and pushing it. And we do receive feedback on a daily and weekly basis from families who test positive, that keep their kids out and they notify the school. And that, again, we're identifying, so they're appearing in our, in our data dashboards. And then lastly, our families have really still appreciated the fact that we update our data on a weekly basis. It matches the state-level data that's reported through DESI and the Mass Department of Public Health. And here again is where you're going to see that composition of the, I believe it was about thirty student cases last week. No, I'm sorry, that was the testing. This is closer to a hundred cases that we actually had in the district over last week. So again, we're continuing to monitor that, continuing to publish the data, continuing to encourage people to do pool testing, to do the At-Home Test Kit. And we'll be able to report over the course of the summer what the results from DESI are or what they're intending to help and support districts in, in the fall as we come back to school. We, we don't know yet. They haven't told us.
Does anybody have any questions, thoughts?
I do think it's important that we remind families to follow the guidelines that Peggy has sent out.
Yeah, Peggy gave us a nice blurb to put in on newsletter last week. And we've been pushing that out and getting good feedback.
Students adhering to wearing the mask when they come back? I know you're supposed to.
Yeah, I haven't heard any reports of people like non-compliance, those five days you're coming back. No, I haven't heard of anything.
Right.
I think people really have been pretty good. And you still do, the masking is still voluntary in the schools. You still see a good number of kids and staff that aren't masking, which is totally fine. So we encourage that if anyone is concerned at all.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Hang on, I just have to click out of this now. All right. Oh, you could have jumped in on that. So this is just the annual vote to, to appoint me to the Valley Board of Directors, the Valley Collaborative, which is our special education partnership school. Each district is required to have one representative on the board. I've been the committee's representative for the last, I guess, since I've been here, so seven or eight years. Very much enjoy the work and would like to continue on. But you do need to vote to formally appoint me for a one-year term.
I'll take a motion, please.
Make a motion to appoint Superintendent Jay Lang as a Chelmsford representative of the Valley Collaborative Board of Directors for the 2022-23 school year.
Second.
Any questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Four zero.
Thank you very much. Item fifteen is just the Valley Collaborative Newsletter. So they put out a fall, winter, and spring newsletter, and then we share that with our member districts. So we just put a PDF copy of that in the packet, and then you have a hard copy on your desk. It shows you some of the programming taking place at Valley and some of the work that they're doing. They really do a very nice job. So that's just a communication to, to share with you. No action necessary. Item sixteen is the Personnel Report, which just details the personnel transactions for the month of April. Again, this is going, the report is going to get a little bit bigger as we get a little deeper into the hiring season. But we had a few new hires in April that actually started during the course of the school year. We had a few resignations. Oftentimes, people might get an end-of-the-year job somewhere else or an opportunity to move from one role to be like an interim or something to another role. And you're starting to see some of the assignment changes on the bottom of the third page. So these are in-district people who have been promoted or moved to different jobs within the district. And I find this helpful, and I hope you do, to just kind of track the comings and goings of staff in the schools. So no action required. Happy to answer any questions you may have, but just sharing April's personnel transactions with you.
Any questions?
HR, the, the position for the HR person, how are we doing?
We're getting there, Maria.
We are? Okay.
I know this is important to you.
This is. Personnel is very important.
I'm just teasing because we talked about it, but we actually had a first round. What I can reveal to you is we did have a first round of interviews for candidates last week. And we have narrowed down to several finalists. And we're having follow-up interviews and reference checks and background checks this week. So if all goes well, we may by next week have a recommendation for you, a note, recommendation, an announcement for you of a selected candidate. So a lot of time and effort's going into it because it is a critical position to the district.
It is. I was going, you know, if we don't fill it, will our temporary situation be able to continue?
Yeah, the, so Candace, who's been on an interim basis, has been wonderful. She is a retired HR director. So she is available to continue helping us. And I broached the subject of even having her staying on to kind of help transition and kind of help coach and mentor the new person. So she's open to that. So it's not like she has a definitive date where she has to stop working. She is retired and has flexibility in her schedule, so will continue to help us.
That's good.
Yeah, she's been excellent. Last item on the agenda for me this evening is just the, a few field trip approval requests. These are all through our community education program, their summer program. So they have a couple of trips to Canterbury Lake Park, Chunky's movie theater, I believe there's like a rain date on there to Mine Falls Parks, and then Sky Venture up in Nashua. These are not overnight trips. They're just day trips, but they happen to be into New Hampshire. So we would just recommend your approval for those trips.
Take a motion?
Make a motion to approve the community education field trips as presented.
Second.
All right, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Four zero. Thank you.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have any liaison reports?
Wellness Committee met.
All right.
Okay, and we had a great meeting. It's all been about compliance and setting up a program for compliance this year. We continue moving forward with that work. We cycle, McCarthy, Recycle Day was a huge success. And I'm going to make a comment on this. The wonderful thing to see about Recycle Day is it's definitely become a community thing. And two, the transition to the PTOs has been terrific. It is fully staffed. There were tons of volunteers and almost nobody that I knew, which were, and personally like had worked with, which I think is terrific to see that continuity. And the other thing that happened at McCarthy was idle, and it was terrific. Another great, great program. And I just want to congratulate the teachers. They also had a performance. They, they did one performance as well. So terrific. I wanted to present those.
Does anybody else have any other updates? So as we're approaching the end of the year, a lot of our PTOs are electing new boards. And I'd certainly like to thank the boards that served over the course of this past year because, you know, trying to pick up from last year and, you know, get up and running again, get parents involved and sponsor all of the many activities that they have sponsored over the course of this year has really been phenomenal. So to thank you to outgoing board members and welcome to the new board members. Chelmsford Friends of Music met last week. You know, again, like many boards and committees here in town are struggling with getting volunteers. It looked like they may not be able to pull it off, but fortunately for us, two people stepped forward to take over the position of president. So, you know, that'll be up and running through next year with some changes to make it maybe more appealing for people to be able to join and participate. And then the last thing is, the Select Board held a listening session last night on how we can be better allies to the LGBTQAI+ community. And in speaking with Chairman Crocker Timmons today, she recommended, I know that most of us couldn't attend because we were in contract negotiations, but she did recommend that we take a look at it because there was really some good recommendations from students there about things that we maybe could do in the, in the schools to help facilitate a process where they are feeling more welcomed and integrated. And I know she spoke with you today as well. So, yes, go ahead.
I was going to say, I'll watch it, too. It's taped and recorded. It is online. We were in negotiations. I didn't get a chance to see it either, but I'll do that this weekend.
Right, so I would recommend that people do that when they get a chance. If there's nothing else, then does anybody have any new items that they would like to add to an upcoming agenda? Any new business? All right, with that, we are now to the second public input part of our meeting. If there's anyone present that would like to address the committee, please come forward and state your name and address. As with our first public comments section, we will not be responding directly to your comments as part of the meeting, but may address them as a future, during a future meeting.
Hello, thank you for having me. Joseph Reddy, 58 Bartlett Street here in Chelmsford. Couple comments I just want to make before I take off. One, I had Thomas Colepois, he was a junior at the high school, shadow me today as part of the employer program. It was a great opportunity to give him a whole, you know, insight into what we do. And I think that gave him some career path options maybe for the future, which I thought was great. But also very impressed with just how prepared he was as a student, the type of questions that he was asking. And I think that that's indicative of really just how well the school system has really done a great job, both from, you know, teachers and, and the administration. So I just wanted to share that with you. It was a great experience for us today. Hopefully, all the other students that participated had the same, you know, experience. So I came here tonight just to make a comment on the tennis. Part of the catalyst was I had reached out to Chairman Timmons to let her know that when we amended the article in town meeting floor, it was really more as an. we amended the article in town meeting floor, it was really more as an opportunity to, you know, step back, try to get a more definitive plan of what could happen with that site and really get public input. Because once that meeting had completed, I had a number of people reach out to me with some really fantastic ideas. So when you guys do go ahead and try to set up some sort of committee or whatever you do, I do think it's really important to kind of get the public input. But, you know, just from my own personal feeling as a resident, as someone who has four kids in the system, I would like to see it stay as some sort of recreational option for kids, regardless of what that might end up being. Because I've had people talk about, you know, lacrosse backboards, I had people talking about pickleball, tennis. It's just more about keeping a community feature that I think will be valuable for the future. And I know you guys are the right people to deal with it. So I just want to say thank you on that. And certainly, you want my help or input, I'm certainly willing to do that. So, and then the last point was you guys talked about the master plan committee. They're now setting up the master plan implementation committee. I don't think the school committee specifically has a seat on it, but I think someone from the school committee should consider joining that implementation committee, only because a lot of it talks about zoning and a lot of housing-related things impact the schools. As you can see with class sizes and these developments that pop up, they certainly start to create, you know, different challenges for the school system. So it might be an opportunity for you guys to really, you know, add some input there. So.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
I'm going to just say, I had two students today, Joe Shadow, and so I just wanted to mention that, too. It was terrific, absolutely a terrific experience. And it is always wonderful to see how incredible they are. So thank you for doing that.
No, you're welcome. It was a pleasure from my part.
It was really, really a wonderful time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night, Joe.
All right, do we have any emails that have been, that anybody has requested that we be read into the minutes? Nothing? Okay, with that, I want to take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn. I second a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Four, zero.